Good morning. We'll call the meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education and it's called Order. Notice, please note that all board members are here. We have a very short agenda, but an important agenda today, so a motion would be in order to approve the agenda. Jim McNeese, Dina Horst, everybody else. All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous vote, and at this point, we're going to have an update on ESER II and ENS with Randy Brad and Craig, and whoever else they want to bring in.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And good morning to everyone. Good to see all of you again. This is going to be hopefully as much of a discussion as it is a presentation just on what we hope the task force to accomplish. And again, I want to thank Janet and Jim for volunteering to serve and for Jim to volunteer to to chair the Uh. We appreciate you volunteering for this work. So I'm going to just try to go over the highlights. Brad and Tate are here. If, once your questions, you know, go into the details that you want to know, because we've gone into a lot of details with the task force, but when you take a look, we've set up this task force to make sure that school districts, both private and public, get a chance to maximize ESER II, ESER III, which is coming soon, ENS I, and ENS II in line with the federal regulations and guidelines. The federal government's likely to audit school districts after the timeframe, right Tate, somewhere in 2023 or 2024? And I want you to think about that, or maybe even later. If they find that those funds were not spent according to the federal guidelines, they make you pay the money back. We're turning over approximately forty to fifty superintendents a year currently. So there's a great likelihood that a different superintendent's going to be sitting in the seat when that audit comes that's sitting in the seat today. This is done to protect school districts. It's done also to make sure that it's a transparency for the public and for you, and that we just help them make sure that, not to, not to restrict what they do, make sure they adhere to the federal law. And there's a lot of misunderstandings as this relates to the federal law. So that's why I set up the task force and that's why we have other people on it that we do. Again, consistently compliant with the federal funds. It's to give guidance to local school districts. It's to give voice to a lot of people that probably do not understand this, because we don't have it, we don't get it very often. It's certainly not the amount of money that's happening. And it helps with your vision and how the locals are going to spend their money over the next several years to not only impact the pandemic, but to accelerate your vision of where we want to go. And then finally, to make sure that we are providing transparency and trustworthiness with the public. So that's why I set up the task force. This is a somewhat complicated chart, and again, you'll have this, but I think it helps understand in one place the flow. And the task force is in charge of the yellow area. But I want to start with ESER I, which was the first round, eighty-five million. It is in school districts now. They must spend that money by September twenty-second. What is really difficult is that ESER I, ESER II, ESER III all have different rules. So while they operate very similar, the reporting requirements, the spending requirements are all slightly different. In some cases can be, so they can be confusing to people. But ESER I, which was a smaller amount, we've dealt with that type of amount before, flowed through the Title I was done. ESER II is what the task force is working on right now. You can see that, because we're using this acronym as if you know what it means. Anytime, again, you're out with the Optimus Club, it's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. ESER. Three hundred and seventy million dollars is retro to be used from March of twenty through September of twenty-three. So it, now, they haven't started drawing down this money. That's important to know. There's not a school district that has used one dollar of ESER II yet. Well, that, by the time you meet in April, that's probably not going to be true. You'll be approving some ESER II funds. You can see that we've got a lot of gaps there on ESER III, right? We think the vote will happen today in the House, and that the President may sign it into law by the end of the week. I say that because the Democrats control the House, and it's likely to be a very partisan vote. So once that happens, we'll take this chart and we'll plug the ESER three dollars in there along with the timeframes. That's the public school money. That ESER is the money going to public schools. On ESER II, ESER I had the private schools and the public's all wrapped into one. ENS money, starting with ESER II, is the emergency assistance to non-public schools, ENS. And now we're calling it ENS I, and what we aren't showing is ENS II, which will be approximately another round of approximately the same amount of dollars. And it goes to any eligible non-public school that it, that can be accredited or not accredited. But it is very different. You'll see the process is very different for the private schools. You will be asked, why is this so different for the private schools? Why did you make it so different? You didn't make it different. The federal law made it different. I've said this many times, the state board, the governor, the legislature had nothing to do with this law in Kansas. We were given the law and we're trying to administer the law as it is spelled out in the federal guidelines and law. So the task force then, I'm going to, I'm not going to read this to you, but the scope basically is to look at ESER II and ENS money, and then look in the future to ESER III and ENS II. And then it's to deliver recommendations similar to the PPC. Right? You had those yesterday around licensure. These recommendations will come to you as a state board, and you will vote to approve the expenditures of that money. At that moment, the next day probably, school districts can start to draw down that money. Now, I want to say this, because I think this is another thing that's, that's not, not clear in the public. The federal government does not like for you to take their money and then go invest it. On the opposite side of that, those of you who ever know, if you, if you work as a sole proprietorship or do any ten ninety-nine where, you know, you have to make quarterly payments to the, they don't want you to wait to make your payments at the end. So we don't get to draw down the three hundred and fifty million and then set on it and then give it to schools. Does that make sense? We have to draw it down as we need it. They would draw it down as they need it. It's not setting somewhere, it stays with the federal government until we do that. And then you can see the responsibilities then of the task force will be to review all those plans and give very detailed reports of those plans on how it was spent, monitor that over the years, and give that to you also. Here's the flow of the task force. They would meet every Friday from three o'clock to five o'clock, at least right now. They are live streamed, and they are recorded, and they're posted on our website and can be viewed live by anyone. Or for those that have insomnia on a Saturday night, they can be re-looked at in its entirety at any point. Again, we'll meet weekly to initially approve these applications. All the reference materials that are given to the task force are posted and shared publicly. And the task force, once we probably get through April, maybe into early May, I say that because there'll be an ESER III round. At some point, though, they'll move to more monthly or, you know, every six weeks. They'll be in a reporting mode of how the money's being spent. Right now, it's about application, and then it'll be about reporting, was the money spent in the manner that they said that they wanted to use? So some differences, as I mentioned. The ENS money has to be applied for from thirty days after they receive the application. You are going to hear, if you haven't already, from the private schools, my gosh, do you guys know how hard this, we're supposed to spend, have a plan to spend twenty-seven million dollars in thirty days? And by the way, did you know we have spring break? And all that's true, and I will tell you, it's not fair. It's the law. That's in the law. The public side has up to a year to apply for the ESER money. They can sit there and wait and say, well, we'll wait till the fall. That's in the law. It's the way the law was written. ESER III, we haven't seen in its entire, and we've seen the bill, but, you know, the regulations, we think it'll be very similar on the ENS side and probably on the ESER side, but we, we don't know. The ENS is a single pool of money that is competitively asked for from the private school. The ESER is not. It goes directly to the school districts on a formula base. So they know how much money they have access to, they just have to apply for how they're going to do it. Kansas City Bishop Ward, if they don't apply, they get zero dollars. Kansas City Piper is going to get some money directly in ESER, and they just have to tell us how they're going to spend it. Very different. If you just divide it up, it looks like the private schools could have access, I say could, because they may not all apply, to a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand per school, because it's by school. And the average award on ESER is a little bit over a million dollars per district. But Wichita would get the most money in ESER, and Healy-Hamilton gets the least money, and that's because you're of the size of the district. So we take a different approach to how we approve ENS than we do ESER. And I'm sure that's going to generate a lot of questions as you go forward. Here's how the ENS then application process will work. We'll receive the applications, and then internally, we will screen those. Tate will lead that work. Make sure that they're completed, that they are, you know, in compliance with the law. If there's any problems, you know, we'll contact the private schools, we'll try to resolve that as quickly as possible. And there's a priority on the private schools for poverty that's in the federal law. So the greater amount of poverty, you're going to be weighted ahead of those that have zero poverty. And then it goes to the task force and to you for reporting of how that's going to happen, and then the allocation to ma, to maximize the number of schools and the number of kids in the private schools that get funded. All this is public, and when all that happens, it comes to you then for approval. And you're going to get all of those at one time. And we'll talk about that timeline in just a minute. The ESER funds look very similar in terms of the process. The applications will come to KSDE. We'll do the same things, except in this case, all we have to do here is screen and make sure that they, that the money that's coming to them is being used in compliance with the law. And then the task force will approve those if indeed they meet the law, or send them back, or ask them to be modified, and then eventually they will come to you also. Now, here's the ESER flow, if you'd just like to see it. On March eleventh, there'll be a webinar to kind of explain this, and this, has any of this changed, Tate on the ESER side?
Yeah, the webinar is going to be for ENS first, so that's not a correct date anymore.
Okay. Okay. Are we still looking at seventeenth for the launch of the ESER application?
Our hope is, yeah.
Okay. So the ESER application will launch, there'll be some office hours where we can work through it. And then once, then, once we get to the, after that launch, the public schools can start to submit their applications. You might be approving some of those at your April meeting. Just depends, they have up to a year to submit it. So we don't know how many will, but we think there's some that will. So that's kind of the timeline for the public side. Used it first because the private side gets much more complicated. This is the old, needs to be modified version. This was predicated on the state board meeting on the thirteenth and fourteenth, which you are. And then we backward mapped that to the thirty days to get everything in. The private schools asked for a little bit more time, rightfully so. We would ask that you consider today having a special board meeting on the nineteenth at ten o'clock to approve the ENS funds, that one, one agenda item, which moves everything back a week for them to have a little bit more time over what you're seeing here. It gives them just a little bit more time. Gives more time for Tate to have the webinar, well, the webinar will be about the same time, but gives them a little bit more time to help walk them through how to fill it out and to make sure everything's okay. So this was the original timeline the task force looked at, but we're asking you basically to move that, that, that back just a little bit as we go forward. And so, Mr. Chairman, that's a very
When would they then have to have everything? Would we then have a meeting on the next, on the sixteenth?
I'm sorry, it was the sixteenth, I said nineteenth, didn't I?
No, I mean, would we, would we, would the task force have a meeting on the sixteenth then? Prior to the ninth?
Yes. Yes. The task force would then approve plans on the ninth and sixteenth.
So the submission deadline moves from the twenty-sixth of?
To the second of April.
Okay, so a full week?
Yes. I'm making sure that Tate's not stabbing me here. No, 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 because we're, we're working on this really hard, you know, because it's a time-sensitive thing to get out.
As you know, we're all getting contacted from the several schools, and I just want to make sure that I can give them the right information.
That's right. And, and I have reached out to Janet Eaton, who serves on the committee, and she's, she thought that this timeline would be agreeable. We've got to have it spent within thirty days of the application, or it's not valid. And that, that's outside the federal window. They only have thirty days.
Okay, just to understand, the state will oversee the application, approve if it, but there is no oversight that we would give to ensure that the money is spent as far as what was on the application. I think what threw me a curve when you were talking about the federal audit, I wondered if there was any kind of liability or focus on the, the state, if, if there was a problem in a school district.
So, yes, we will check that they spent the money as they said, or they can amend their, their application, Betty. And we'll do And we'll do that about every six months, and as we, and then every year as we audit. And we'll certainly, that summer of '23, you know, we'll want to make sure before that closes. Any audit would come to the school district. It's, now, we can be audited too, and will be, I assume, but our process is to make sure we get it out in this manner. So there will be oversight and transparency of how they spend it. And let's just say Andover changed their mind, they were going to spend it in this way, and they changed their mind, they would have to reapply and get that approved before they were allowed to spend it.
I was kind of wondering if there were any repercussions for the state if a district-
Yeah, Tate can tell you about the, you know, what the audit decided to look like a little bit.
Thank you. Typically, when the federal government comes out to audit us, they're going to work with our fiscal team and program team, and then they'll pick certain amount of districts. Like, an example is when they visit us for ESEA funding, they typically go to at least two to three districts, which is typically at least Wichita to peak in Kansas City because of size and location. But then they'll randomly select other districts that they'll have us pull the files for, and we never know those districts upfront. So that's why we're having to work with every district on this. Is that helpful?
It is. Thank you.
We have a question from Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so Dr. Watson, let me, I'm going back to last, last year when we had to approve all those schools when we waived those hours, and this is a little bit different, but it's kind of going with this. So some of, when I read through all those, I started with the private schools, and then worked my way down to my area and all the other schools, reading through that, I would say, okay, this isn't happening at this particular school. They were told us that this would happen, as far as like, we're going to have a graduation ceremony, ceremony for our seniors, we're going to, we're going to do this, we're going to make sure everybody has Wi-Fi so that they can work remotely if they need to. Now, that's when, there were times when the schools shut down. Private schools, most of them, look, they didn't lower their credit, their credits, scores for their, not scores, but their hours. A lot of them kept them at 24 or higher, which a lot of the big schools went down to 21, like Olethwa and some of the others. So we looked through that, and we said, this is what they told us they were going to do. Now, you said we could come back and look at it if they weren't getting that done, and we can revote, or we could do whatever. I don't know, that's what I'm concerned about as far as the audit. You said it could take six months. I'm concerned about, they can go back and spend stuff from 2020, can the ENS, can they do that with the private schools as well? Because a lot of those stayed, their administration stayed open until eight o'clock at night, where some of the areas in my area were closed, you couldn't get, you couldn't even go into the schools. I guess I'm just concerned as far as like, can they go back and use that 2020, go back, back date and go back to helping those families in the private schools as well?
Yes, they can.
Okay, and so, I guess I'm just concerned about, and she made a good point, when you, when you put down that stuff on paper, and we're going to look over that and review it, and it's going to come at us fast, it's going to be a lot of information. I mean, if you read through a lot of those schools, those private schools stayed open for their, for their families till eight o'clock at night, administration-wise, you could reach people, you could go into the schools and get information, or your books, or whatever it was. I'm just concerned that we're, it's a lot of money, and then we, they got, they don't even have to spend it for another year, like you said, even got till 2023 to draw down. I'm just wanting to know what, what part of that's going to be pandemic-related, and what, what part of it's going to be using the tools as far as like ACT last year, they had the pre-ACT and the ACT scores, and the next four weeks, we're going to get new ACT scores because they just took those on the 23rd of February. I would say maybe they want to look at some of that and say, did we go way down, way down from, from last year, and our scores go down?
Same as with state assessments, Michelle, you know, look at that too. So the private schools have to develop their plan in a short period of time and try to project. The public schools can wait, right before, and they can do it in, they can do it in segments. Let me say, Yudora is an example. Yudora may say, you know what, we're going to apply for just some summer school money, and then we're going to wait to see how that goes, and then we'll apply for next year, you know, we'll chunk it. And that all is, is possible to do. It's not possible to do on the private school side, by the way, the federal law was written. So there's a lot of interesting things on the, on the ENS money that says, we have, you have to have a plan for two years of how you're going to spend this, or reimburse back to March of '20. But, but the key, what you said, Michelle, it all has to be pandemic-related. And that's, that's where Tate's team will review first. The task force will review to make sure, is it pandemic-related? And then, that's the first question. The second question is, here are the 15 items, right, that you can spend it on if it's pandemic-related, social-emotional, for example. All right, then, why, what are you planning to do in social-emotional with this money that was caused, that you saw in the pandemic? So it's, it's, it's a, it's interesting because it's all federal law and money, but we have to give some oversight, transparency to that, and make sure it's spent in accordance with the law. And you're right, and it's coming fast.
So there'll be a lot of material to read over, like there, like we had last year, to look through everything.
Yes.
Because it's, I mean, and I know they have to say, we hope to do this, we don't, we don't, you know, it's like, they, they kind of put it down there, like, we want to do this for our students.
Right, and on the private side, Tate, they cannot amend that, can they? What's the law say on that?
It's not specific, but it'll depend on how much money you get requested.
Okay, if there's money left, they could. Okay. And then remember, coming on the heels of this, is another round of ESER III, ENS II money that will have slightly different guidelines.
We have a question from Jean.
I, I think you've already answered it. I was just wondering if the private schools could amend their application within the spending period?
And if, if they don't spend or ask for all of the money, then I think, as Tate said, you could possibly have another open round where they could apply again, but we don't know. You know, there may be more than $27 million requested. We don't know until we get there on the private school side.
What I was getting at is, could, could a private school say, I want this much money for summer school, and then, and then decide that they don't want to do summer school, they want to do something else?
I think the answer is no, right, Tate?
Yeah, ideally no.
Because it's different. Now, the public school could do that. And that's why you're going to hear, this isn't the same rule, they're not. The law is very different, and the ESER III, ENS II laws are going to be very different also. These are great questions, because you're going to get lots of questions from the public on this and from the schools. I will, I would just say, you know, through the task force and also through the webinars, we're trying to walk everyone's hand through every step of this. But there will be people that didn't get the message, right? So they missed something. They didn't, and we don't want that to happen. So if you've got private schools in your community, or you have contacts with them, encourage them to apply. The public schools get the money, they just have to adhere to the guidelines. Private schools won't get a dime unless they apply. Non-accredited or accredited. So it's, it's open to both. These are great questions.
Don't say any more questions, go ahead.
I am, I am done with, with the presentation part of this. Deana?
I was wondering if, when we look at the agenda, will we see these individually? I mean, groups somewhat, like we see KISA, or so that we look at each one of them separately? Or will it be more of a consent agenda? Or will that be decided at a later date?
I have not seen the application, so, again, Tate, if I say something incorrect, please jump up. I believe you're going to see what the task force is, which, you're going to see a dashboard of all of them, kind of a synopsis, and then you'll have access to the entire application. So it's, what do we anticipate, just on the private side? How many schools do you anticipate, Tate?
We're guessing between 75 and 150.
Do you hear, 75 to 150 schools? Now, what the Wichita Catholic Diocese is doing, and maybe others, is they're combining those, they're, they have to apply by school, and then they're going to submit those as the diocese, they're kind of helping their schools, what is, 38, I think? 38 schools in their diocese, and then they're going to submit those. But it, it's awarded by school on the private school side. So you can get, like, Independence Bible College is a, is a school in Independence, Kansas, could apply for that money. So we're anticipating 75 to 100, which goes, Deana, to you and Michelle's, that's going to be a big bulk coming at you at one time. So if you want to read every one of them, you'll have access to it.
Would be kind of overwhelming, or could be.
So there's going to be, there's three checks to this. One will be internal, right? Our internal staff will work with them to try to make this process really tight. Then the task force is going to spend two entire, task force is going to spend four hours or maybe longer. I always say four hours, and the chair that volunteered keeps telling the committee, we may go longer than five o'clock. But they, they're scheduled to spend four hours on those, on those applications, and then those will come to you. And every meeting that you have, whatever, whatever ESER approval will also come to you. That, that will be, that'll go on for months.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When it comes to the spending priorities for, for schools, is there a, I know that there's a list that the federal government gives out that says it has to meet these, these things. Are we then also prioritizing from who we disperse, especially when it comes to the private, because it's not by formula? It's first come, first served, correct? For ENS?
It's not first come, first served. So it means if you, if you get your application in first and say, I want 20 million, you get it, it's, within the 30-day window, we'll take all of those under the same consideration on, on the ENS side.
Okay.
So we did not want to have a-
It's a balancing, but it's not a formula either, like the public schools are.
Correct.
Or it's per dollar, per kid, right off the bat.
We have some guidelines in that poverty's got to be given a priority, so that'll be weighted as our staff looks at that in relation to the award.
I guess that's kind of, what are, from the task force, that might be a question for Jim, or maybe you guys are still trying to figure it out. In terms of the spending, what, what are your priorities that you're, you guys are looking at?
On the ENS side, poverty.
Okay.
Yeah. The higher the poverty, the more you're going to, and that's because it's in the federal law. Outside of that, then, on both the ENS and the ESER, if you meet the law, you get the money. But we want to see the money first being spent on kids and families that were impacted. I, I think we've, we've been very clear on that, especially on the ESER. Before you go spend money on ventilation systems, spend money on the loss that you've seen socially, emotionally, and academically that I somewhat laid out for you yesterday with kids in the pandemic. So that, those are guidelines. The law clearly says you can spend it on ventilation systems, right, Ben? And so we have no authority to circumvent the law, but what we can do is make sure that they, they hit the priorities of the state board and, and within the law.
So the academic needs and the social-emotional needs of our kids will, will take a higher, we, we're, we're pushing that they're a higher priority than HVAC systems.
That's, that's correct.
Would be an accurate, I appreciate that, thank you.
And we, we have influence in those things, not authority. Every time we talk, we talk about that this money needs to go to kids, but if they apply for that, and it's within the law, especially on the ESER side, we don't have, all, all we can do is make sure that we try to influence and use our influence, our bully pulpit or whatever.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Chair, thank you.
Well, thanks for clarifying on the ENS money that the individual schools have to apply, and not, it's not the diocese or a conglomerate of districts or schools. And so when the money is distributed, it would go to the individual schools by name. And, and the task force will decide, say a school asks for $6 million, they will decide if they get six, or two, or whatever, based on, the poverty would be the driving force in that.
Poverty in the total amount. So I think they're going to, you know, be looking at, every school probably needs some money, and if there's more requests than the 27 million, you know, that, that could be a consideration too. And Jim, I want to give another complicator in something that you said that I want to make sure, otherwise Tate is going to get excited here. The private schools do not receive direct money. That's in the federal law. They, they get services, or they can ask for services to be contracted, and our service centers are going to provide that. So if I need masks, you know, here's where you could buy them. If I want to hire counselors to help come in with kids, that money doesn't go to Bishop Carroll. It goes, Bishop Carroll would contract with them. ESDAC, ESDAC would hire the counselors, and then they would do it. Pittsburgh Colgan says, we want to buy portable air. Okay? They can do that, but we own, the state of Kansas owns that product. And you're going to, again, hear, that doesn't make any sense to me. That's the federal law. So the money, while it goes directly to the public school, it does not go directly to the private school, they draw down those services or needs. That's another complicator in this.
It's kind of a safeguard for them as well.
It's correct. It's, it's part of the separation within the Constitution of-
Well, I was thinking more in, in accounting process, because the school service centers like ESDAC-
Yes.
And they, they would be of assistance to help the private entities apply and manage.
And in some ways, it protects the private schools a little bit greater than the public because of that. You're right.
Thank you.
Jean?
If, if a private school asks for and is approved for an expense, but then late, and, and contracts with a service center or somebody for that, but then later decides not to do that, that money is lost? Or can another private school step in and utilize those services?
Tate, I'm going to, it gets complicated, so come on up, because the answer is it doesn't get lost, but it gets, it's complicated.
We've asked for clarification on that type of information. How we perceive right now, by our understanding, is that we would be able to reallocate that for other services to either that specific private school or the pot itself. And one of our goals with, as we take stuff to the task force is, if we go over the 27 million, is we're going to have to prioritize with the private schools what they want. So if something like that happened, they might have had something that we deemed allocable, but we didn't have the money to fund, and then we would work with that. And it's the same type of thing as if they asked for PPP, like, they asked for 500 masks in like two or three shipments, they find out they don't need the last shipment, it's, that money's not going to be lost if we can make sure. And so we think we can reallocate it, we're still waiting for a final decision.
The, let me just span on that just a little bit to Jean. So let's say we only get $20 million of request, and we've got $27 million to give out. What happens? Federal government take back the seven. What we would do is do another round of opening it back up, right, Tate? We, I mean, we could look at, we want to give that money to the private schools, so we would say, hey, do you want to either expand what you've asked for, or are there other people that want to apply? But at the end of the day, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tate, if the private schools don't request the full amount, it goes back to the governor. It goes back to the governor, and then the governor would have options of how to spend it within guidelines that are given to her from the federal government. We, we want to spend the money on the private schools, so we're hopeful that we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Tate's going to need a raise.
It's only the fourth time this week he's told me that too, so, you know, you know what, we're going to have to look at some help. I mean, he can't- I mean, he can't, I mean, this is a big lift by our agency over the next two or three years and we'll have to have some temporary, if you think about two or three years to do it.
I mean, I wasn't going to ask this one, but probably need to. So if we do have to hire more people, will that come out of our discretionary money?
Comes out of our administrative money.
Okay. Is that like a certain percent? Okay. Well, on the private school thing, let's say they had to have a new air handler and they bought an air handler. Can they do that?
No. It's a permanent structure. Well, they can, but then we're going to take it back.
So we'd actually rip it out of the building?
It's not, they can't buy property that's going to be permanent.
Okay.
They, they don't own the property. So again, I'll come back to the portable air. They can use that for two to three years, but then it's not their property.
So the state will come pick it up?
Yes.
And if it breaks down in the meantime, the state will fix it?
I don't know that answer. I don't know if we have a maintenance contract.
I don't know. I'm just thinking it cut out a lot of things they might need that they're not going to be able to get with this money, but-
That's fairly typical though of Title I funds now. So I mean, it's not something they're used, what they're not used to is getting twenty-five million dollars.
Right.
I mean, they're looking at this going, wow, how, what are we going to do? And they're, remember, we're going to get another twenty-five million or so within two or three months. So Tate's and his team's doing a really great job of trying to help them.
So they essentially get one shot at what they want and it has to be in by April second at this point?
Yes. That is correct.
Thank you.
If you adjust and agree to the special board meeting, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so as we see things for transparency, it's probably good for us to be on those, I think they're live streamed on Fridays.
Yes.
So just be on top of that. I mean, the best way, because you said there's going to be people that are going to miss something or, so, or who, who in the district is, is probably going to be the one that's, that's most engaged in this, that we need to be also, you know, informing or watching or when they're talking, you're hearing principals or whatever talk about stuff. It's like, whoa, 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 that's not, you know, you misunderstood. Because remember last year when we shut down the schools? They could actually go into the schools and get, get stuff and they, some of them chose just not to go in at all, but they, they weren't really shut down if you could social distance, correct? Remember they, they misunderstood. So I think may, communication right off the bat, since this is coming so fast, needs to be out there so that we're not backtracking or pulling something or not approving something. That's just my, I'm just saying that out loud.
On the larger systems, Michelle, on the, on the larger private systems, it would be a superintendent, assistant superintendent, I think Lutheran schools or the Catholic schools.
I meant public.
Oh, public.
Because they've got some-
Superintendent's, principals.
Okay.
And then again, if you're talking about a lathe size, there'd be some central office people. If you're talking about small school size like Lewisburg, you're probably talking about principals and superintendents.
And they'll all be engaged in the transparency.
They can watch it or they can look at the recording.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have to give guidance on, as far as like-
Yes, and we meet with superintendents, both public and private, every Thursday still at twelve-thirty.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. I say meet, it's a Zoom meeting. We don't physically meet.
That's what we all know now.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I believe that's it.
Well, thank you. Janet, did I mention Janet and Jim volunteered for the task force? And they would be happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
We're happy for it.
Tate, Tate and his team, they don't sleep at all. So, you know, if you've got a question at two in the morning, they're doing, well, you know, and then again, we're going to have to get, get them some help. The Boston Consulting Group does help, but, you know, we're going to have to make sure on the federal accounting side that we've got things really tight and that'll be some work on our end. So, thank you. And it would again, take a motion to have a special board meeting if you so desire.
I so desire and would entertain a motion for a special board meeting at ten o'clock by, by Zoom on the nineteenth of April. Gene makes that motion. Betty seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Now, we hadn't voted on, I was going to call it anyway, so. That motion passes.
The private schools will appreciate it.
And next is the workshop and are there some kind of arrangements we need to make?
We're going to make, we're going to kind of get you in some groups because we're going to give some, we're going to talk a little bit and have you talk with each other.
So if we want to take a little break? Because I know Janet would like one and, and then we can rearrange.
Janet volunteered for the break. Okay, let's, let's come back at five till.
Okay. So we're going to break this up. Brad and I are going to tag team this. And as we go through the morning and we get toward the end, let me just tell you, and Brad, Brad knows just a little bit about, Brad and I are going to go back out on the road. Not, not immediate, but probably by the summer. Where we're going to do a very similar process to validate the research that was done. This in fact turned into Brad's dissertation. And, and also to gain input. So by the time we hit fall or late winter, we're going to have more data sets than even we have today. I want to start with a video. So we're going to, we're going to break this up and then Ann, you may want to come around and join this team at some point. But we're going to break this up where we're going to do a little segment and we're going to have you discuss what that means to you. And then we'll go another segment and we'll do that again. I want to start with a video. And I just, I found this today because I got sent something from a counselor, M. McPherson, McPherson Middle School, Jeff Alman, that I like a lot and has done a lot of great work with kids. But I want you to, I want you to watch this intensely. It's only about three or four minutes and I'm going to stop it. Because it, I think it sets the stage for as we talk about your vision. And so I hope, as I, as Eric and I were saying, when it all works, it's a well, it looks like an orchestra that's practiced a lot.
The current common model of education in the United States focuses primarily on English Language Arts, ELA for short, and mathematics. This model has been in place and relatively unchanged for over one hundred years. But is it still applicable to the twenty-first century? From early education through high school, the current model encourages students to focus their learning in these two core areas. And this model measures students' progress with two important but limited outcomes, core subject grades and test scores. With high-quality education, access to resources and hard work, students may do well in this system. They achieve academic success as they move from kindergarten through secondary education. Unfortunately, this doesn't always mean they're prepared for college or career. These students may not even be aware that there are crucial skills that their education has not emphasized. And when they enter post-secondary education or the workforce, they do not have the cross-cutting capabilities, behavioral skills or career navigation skills they need to achieve success. Research shows that ELA and mathematics are simply not enough to prepare students for a successful transition to post-secondary education. a successful transition to post-secondary education and the workforce. In fact, researchers have long noted a serious leaky pipeline problem in our education system. This leaky pipeline means students often trickle out of post-secondary education before completion despite having received adequate K-12 instruction under the current model. This is because students arrive to the next phase in their educational journey lacking the skills necessary for success. For example, they may not be prepared to adapt to a new environment, engage in collaborative work, manage their time, or make good decisions about their own education and career path. This disconnect becomes even more apparent when students move into the workforce. Under the current model, students simply don't learn how to build a skill set that will prepare them for a job they're passionate about, or choose a career that's a good fit for them. Meanwhile, employers are searching for new hires who have a wider skill set than the current education model provides. They need employees who are dependable, problem solvers, lifelong learners, and collaborative team players. Right now, many students simply aren't prepared to enter a competitive, complex job market that will call on them to demonstrate all these skills and more. So students, post-secondary institutions, and employers are feeling the limits of the common model of education. Academic skills are simply not sufficient to ensure success. Instead, research indicates that success at school and work is multi-dimensional. And if success is multi-dimensional, we need a multi-dimensional measurement of student readiness focusing on a diverse, adaptable set of knowledge and skills. This is where the ACT holistic framework comes in.
This is not a propaganda video, or maybe it is. It's from A-C-T. You know them? They're a college prep company where you take a test. And we spent time, as Brad will talk about probably, in their offices several years ago, where they laid out this in an early version and said to us, when we look at adult success, we can't equate very much of that to how they score on the ACT. Brad's going to talk about we found that out in Kansas first, but I thought I'd just show you that. Because here's a company that has relied over 60 years on a test score to determine readiness. And they're saying, it's, it's not, it's not, it's multifaceted. It's some, it's some of the picture, Dina, right? It's just not all. So with that, I'm going to cue this up. And Brad and I are going to go over your work together. So Brad, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Randy. And for many of you, this is going to be a walk in the past. And for some of you, I hope that this is just kind of informs because everything that we do today as an agency is still grounded in what Kansans said we wanted to do. So I'm going to walk you through, I don't want to spend a ton of time on it because I want to give you some time to reflect on it. But back in 2015, this board directed Randy and I to go across the state, and some of you were a part of that, to go out and ask Kansans, what is it that we value and we want in our educational system? Because the state board was then going to take that and build a whole new vision. So we went across the state, 20 locations, and asked Kansans what it is that they valued and they wanted. And that first set of questions, when we went out and we analyzed it and looked at it, we found that only about 5% of the participants represented business and industry. So we worked with the Kansas Chamber, and we went out across the state and had, in these locations, we invited Chamber members from that region to come to one location. And we asked them the same questions as we did the local community. And several thousand people attended those. We partnered with K-State to analyze that data. And at the time, we crashed their qualitative analytical system. So we ended up having to purchase the software as an agency, but we partnered with them to make sure that we were analyzing this qualitative data in what would be considered a research mine. And we, and it was really enjoyable working with them on that. But the very first question we asked, well, before we get to that, after we analyzed and took all of that data, we went back out across the state on what we called a reunion tour because before we wanted the board to really use that to inform our new direction, we wanted to ensure, did we hear you correctly? Is this what you told us on those community conversations? So these are the 10 locations we went out to in the fall across the state to say, working with K-State, our research staff, is this what you told us? Because we wanted to make sure we heard them correctly. And it was one of the first times in my experience, we went back out and people were like, really? You're going to ask us to make sure that this is what? And they even honed in a little more on it to make sure that, yes, that not only is that what we said, but in reflection, I think we can even go a little bit deeper. So we then took that data and even refined it more. But the first question that we wanted from those focus groups was the characteristics of a successful young Kansan. And thousands of responses, when we analyzed it, about 23% of the skills, the attributes, the characteristics, the abilities fell within what we would say, what we called academic skills. And 70%, so you just, you know, Randy just showed you that video. Not only did we want to hear what Kansan said, but we wanted to validate, does that align to what research is saying as well? And it was amazing how closely, when we asked thousands of Kansans to describe those skills, 70% of them were non-academic. And it was very clear to us that as a state, we were coming off a no child left behind where we valued every school and every child and every system based off of a test score. And even though it's important that you're academically ready, most of the skills you can't measure off of a standardized test. But that's where we put all of the pressure. That's where we, because we all have heard, what gets measured gets taught. And we got really good at teaching around that test. What was also very interesting, getting a little deeper into what they said, of the 23% of those academic skills, 10% of them is what are referred to as instrumental skills. That means they have to be able to use it in real-world, on-the-job applications. Not just teaching academic skills so they can pass the chapter test. Because if they don't know how to apply it, one, they won't retain it, and two, how many times have we heard, when will I ever use this? Also, it's got to get into the critical thinking where they can analyze it, where they can defend it, where they can argue it, where they can, you know, think critically about their academic skills. Of the 70%, and we'll get a little bit in detail on this, are those non-academic, which are the inter and intrapersonal skills. Those were the ones that you just heard in the video: time management, perseverance, self-regulation, communication. And that's what, now this was general community people just saying, this is what we would value in an employee, in a successful young, these are the skills that, the biggest reason most kids don't complete some post-secondary isn't because they're not academically prepared, it's they don't have these kinds of skills. So then, as I mentioned, we went out to the business and industry and asked them the same questions, thinking about the employees that they're looking to hire. And they were even stronger on non-academic skills. And when you break down those inter and intrapersonal, 54% of all the skills were intrapersonal. And I'm going to share with you what we mean by those. And again, when we talked about academically, they also stressed, we don't have kids that know how to use math, science, English, any content really on the job. You know, they come in and they're just like, well, I remember having algebra, but I've, I've never had to use algebra or geometry. You know, I just remember construction companies saying, they don't know how to calculate the slope of a roof. They don't know how to figure square footage. You know, they, you know, all of that math in real-world application, they just, they've never used it in that way and we have to reteach it. We find that they'll recall things, but they've never had to use it in real-world application So because of what Kansans told us, we partnered with a group out of KU. And they had already developed this competency wheel. And we now call it the Kansans Can Competencies. But this is where you see, when we talk about intrapersonal and interpersonal skills, this is what Kansans were describing. And matter of fact, Randy has had over 10,000 people, and some of you have may have been involved in this, when you pick which one of these you believe is most critical for your child, your granddaughter, your grandson, someone close, very seldom do they say, in the cognitive realm, content knowledge. It's generally self-regulation, persever, I mean, these are, again, still validating, this is the work. And the reason we partnered with them, because they have lessons, they have videos. How do you incorporate this in content areas? This isn't something that we need to go and recreate. We just got to get creative in math, in science, in art, in music. They have lessons, they have videos, schools can get on, and how do we incorporate these types of skills in regular classrooms? And the reason we partnered with them is because Kansan said, we value this as much as we do academic. So with that, you know, in your groups, what we would like you to do, again, this is what still grounds our work. We haven't strayed from it. I mean, this is, you know, I've shared with my staff, you know, an article that as a state agency, we are very much at the helm, but we can't do the rowing. There's, we've got to, we partner with our service centers, we partner with our TAZN, we partner with, this is what drives KISA. So what we would like to do is just have you spend a few minutes kind of reflecting on, is this, how does this fit into the work of the board, the work of our vision and the direction, especially coming out of this pandemic? How do we take this to move us to the next level, especially schools can't say we don't have the resources now? So we just want to give you a little bit of time to kind of reflect on this and have a little bit of conversation, then we'll come back. And what we'd like to do is have each team just share with the rest, maybe one or two things that your groups kind of talked about. So let's start with this group over on the west side of the room.
Actually, it wasn't enough time, and that concerned me, because you just get started. I was trying to share an idea with my group, and I know it, time is up. When you put time constraints and say, come up with something, or what's your concern, that puts a lot of pressure, because we all should be able to articulate our thoughts, and you can't do that in, what did you give us, five minutes?
I'm happy if this group needs more time, we're just kind of make, this is your day.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying, when you say, what do you think about, I say, what do you think that you talked about?
Or just, just thoughts?
Of solutions, thought is, this needs a lot more time. We had looked at how, what we rely on to teach, as an example, critical thinking skills. We always rely on math as being something to develop that. We looked at, okay, can you substitute, like the computer science, for the math, and still be able to develop skills in that area? That's where the conversation was going, but we didn't come to any kind of rightful conclusion on that. It's just a topic that we really should explore more. The other thought was, it would be very interesting, when you hear, not from those students that are on track and believe in education and academics, but what about the students that we're losing? Do we have any idea what it is that they feel could help? So it'd be good to hear from, maybe a little more from students as well.
And sometime, it might be interesting just to hear from the team that created all of this, the competency, that this does not need to be in isolation of core content. This can be done and embedded in any, and it actually helps kids be more successful academically when they're learning these skills while they're learning the content. And that's the whole purpose behind all of this is, and that takes a skill, to be able to embed these types of skills in a regular content area. So how about this group over here?
What about?
Just thoughts? Anything you'd want to share with the group about your conversation?
We're very critical, but not very technical.
I do, I would share. In looking at this, it doesn't seem, I'm looking at sort of the mythological, you know, perfect student that goes on and does all the right things and has this great life, and comparing that to the student that struggles. And really, it seems like what we need, we need to incorporate more resilience in these students, a confidence, a belief in self, and a motivation to do something about that, a social responsibility or civic responsibility. And those things aren't mentioned, maybe they're inherent in some of them, but I do believe that maybe we could look at some more of those factors for students, because really, when we start in preschool or kindergarten, we've got the same clay, and by the time it gets to high school, it's a different person because of their circumstances and their factors, but we still have the ability to incorporate more of these skills or to help them develop them.
Yes, and we'll see here in just a little bit, how the board in the Kanson's Can Vision took just this piece of it and fitted in to a broader vision, because this is just one piece of what Kanson said. While it was 70% plus of the skills, this was just a piece of those.
Well, I would say, and Jean alluded to this, in terms of, where do we learn these things? You know, who specifically deals with conflict management, or goal-setting, or self-awareness? You know, and for a lot of students, when you, when a lot of folks, from my frame of reference, and we all bring our own frame of reference to this, has been through activities that are not part of the, are considered extracurricular, but in terms of success factors in the future, being successful, people look back on those experiences and tell you, they were way better than the US history class I took.
Yeah, and that's, in a traditional system, that's traditionally where you experience and learn these types of things, and that's where we're moving forward. These can be learned in any time you're around kids, whether it's history government, whether it's music, whether it's, it's just people don't traditionally think about teaching these skills outside of a, you know, or in a content area.
But just because you make someone be on a, in a band, or in a football, or in a club, does not guarantee that you're going to get these things.
That's correct.
You know, and not to be argumentative with Jean, but I don't think they all show up with the same clay. You know, they're all different.
Yep.
And their experiences, be they socioeconomic, be they genes, I don't know, there's some kids that math comes easy to, I didn't get that gene, but I ran faster than them. I got the run faster gene, you know, there's a different, there's different clay.
But we all have possibilities.
We all have possibilities, yeah, no, that, I have no problem with that, I mean, you know, but we all have experiences and status, or status, you know, socioeconomic conditions that change, you know, or challenge you in terms of how your clay is molded. You know, we all have clay.
And we've mentioned around the state multiple times that, you know, I've never met a child that didn't have gifts, talents, hopes, and dreams, but I've met thousands of them that didn't have an adult help them find them, and they're all unique.
Well said.
How about this?
Apparently, I'm speaking. So, well, I did, I started by, I know some people in the room know my background, but I started by pointing out that in our formula of post-secondary success, I'm a failure. I left high school early, and I ended up dropping out of college, I never finished my degree, and I feel like the things on this slide really illustrate the skills that I was missing at the age of 16 when I graduated from high school, going into college. So, you know, this is near and dear to my heart, and that led us into a conversation then about the intense focus that we have currently on tests and grades, and then that led into a conversation around retention and the real-world learning components that we really need to be focused on, because these are the skills that come into play when you're in that real-world learning environment, if you can create that in a school setting. And so for me, I ended up learning it in the real world, many years too late, I eventually got there, but not all kids have the opportunities that I have had, and that, you know, they're not able to create those opportunities. And so Jim, for instance, gave the example that he thought that he was bad at math, but he ended up in statistics. And, you know, when you're there and you're doing the real work, then that's where these things really start to come into play, and we certainly, another five minutes would have, would be helpful.
Add another 25 minutes, but it really would be.
Right, we just got started.
All right, well, I'm going to turn it over to Randy. We're going to give you some more time, and just several times throughout the day, as we somewhat build this. This was the first question, there's been a lot of research on this first question. In fact, Jim, when we ask young people, I think Betty said, let's get the opinion of young people, Brad and I have been in front of tons of young people, and we say, where do you learn this? And they universally say, extracurricular. We learned it in FFA, we learned it in debate, we learned it in band, we have examples that we see in K-12, but they'll tell you primarily they didn't learn in the classroom. Business leaders, as Brad said, are universal about what they want to see, we're in a wrong structure. That's what this first question kind of points out. Now, let's go to what we also, is the second question, was when we ask people, what's a successful 24-year-old look like and got all these skills? Second was, what should be K-12's role in producing that? How should we produce that person? And how should we measure it? Right? And the third question, which we never get to, because we handed that off to board de regents, was, what should college look like? What's your post-secondary, I should say, look like? So now we're going to get in some research here, but they said, the results of the second question, what should be our role in producing that person, fell into skill training and strategic activities. And I just want to walk you through what they said, and then we'll have another discussion, which will expand upon what you were just talking about. So let's look at skill training. Kanson said, you know what? In the skill training, we want these instrumental skills and non-academic skills, that was 28% of that, of that area. And if you look at that, again, as Brad said, these are preparing you for employment. Preparing you for employment, they thought that was really important, or life. And the non-academic were those skills Brad just said. And that, those are the skills, they said, that, you know, that schools should teach, again, academic, as we've said, even though you can see that, that that was fairly low. And then critical thinking. It amazes me, when I was teaching, and I still hear it, I think Betty, you alluded to it, oh, I teach critical thinking. Nah, I really didn't. I mean, I tried, but I taught in isolation. I taught for 54 minutes at Andover High School, my last teaching area, 56 minutes, and then the bell would ring, and they would go to another isolated content, and I never knew what they were going to. I never could tie it together. I had great discussions about Thomas Jefferson and democracy, and it should have linked with great literature, right? But it wasn't set up to do that, and it still isn't. And Kanson said, see, that we want that. So that was the skill training side, all right? If you look at the instrumental skills, our researchers broke that up, these are what Kanson said. We want more concrete, realistic practice of the skills. We want the skills gained from experience. Melanie, you just articulated that extremely well, right? I was, third grade, I was around-the-world champion, like gold stars on the board. If it wasn't for K Small every now and then, who's a great classmate, attorney in Kansas City, tripping me up, do you know what around-the-world is? A kid sitting in their chair, another kid comes and stands side by side, and a flash card goes up, three times eight, 24, I got to go to the next person, and I could defeat the whole class. Well, because of that, I got put in advanced math in fourth grade, and all the way through, I was in advanced math. I was memorizing, all right? This will be true of dyslexic kids too, on reading, right? Michelle, you talk about that a lot, bright kid, I was, I didn't have any clue what three times eight meant, other than I could memorize it, until you get to algebra. They throw that stupid X in there, and then the geometry, and you're supposed to prove it. And I was like, who turned out the lights? And at that moment, people said to you, me, you're not very good in math. Okay, I don't like it anyway, I want to be in social studies. I don't think that's true. I think I wasn't very good at understanding that I didn't know base 10 system at all, because I, because if you put me with Craig, or Brad, who's a business major, we'll come, I do a lot of estimation of numbers in my head, and I, and I play with them. Craig's much more formula-based in his approach, if that makes sense. Kanson said, we want you to practice those skills. Where do you do that? In FFA? You ever been to the FFA conference? Right? Those kids, they run the whole thing, the kids in the alumni, run the whole thing. Go to K-State when we can, and kids are getting up there giving speeches and running for office, and they're working till midnight, and they're, they're practicing those skills over and over and over and over again. You see that when the, when the, the kids, you know, the Skills USA kids, and they stand before you. Job exposure, you need to be mentored or coached, service or voluntary, you know, internships. You see where this is leading, right? This is what Kanson said of the skills. Now, let's look at the strategic, then what are the activities that should be done in schools? Those were the skills to be done in. Well, you're going to see a lot of things that Brad's going to go over as we talk about redesign. First of all, school climate. And this was muddy. They just said, you know, the climate of school is not very good to produce the outcome that we want. And, and while the research was unclear, specifically, there was one thing that came out, I'll never forget this, because Tony, our lead researcher, one thing that came out that we use over and over, Kanson said, we value kids going to college much more than we value kids not going to college, the traditional four years. That you should value trade schools, you should value apprenticeships, you should value electricians and plumbers with an equal intensity, and you don't. That the kids that show up on the stage and that are honor graduates and get to be, the kid's going to be in pharmacy school. Nothing wrong with that, so what about these other kids? That was, that was the one takeaway out of that. You need to do career planning. You need to really start working with them on what they want to do. You see, the research, when should it start? Unclear, but around eighth grade. You think about your IPS, when did you say it was eighth grade? Need to start no later. But we're still doing this wrong. It's not, it's not a criticism, it's just a, we're asking kids, what do you want to be? It's a wrong question. It's what do you like to do? I say this all the time, I have, I have parents, and I'm going to be working with a young man next Tuesday, because I just love to still do it, and a parent asks me to do it, so my kid doesn't know what he wants to do. I said, give me two hours. Give me two hours of the Give me two hours with the kid. Because I have parents say this all the time, you know, Randy, my, my kid said they wanted to be a nurse and they got to college and they changed their mind. You can see the irritation, because it's costing them money. And now they want to be a teacher. And they went through all this stuff, what's, what happened? They changed their mind. Cause I could tell you if I was talking to that kid, you know what that kid likes to do? They want to help someone. So they may change to be a minister, they may go be, do social work, they may be a teacher, right? They may, they may be a, they want to help someone. They haven't quite pinpointed what area, and they may change their mind over time. But what that kid's likely to never be is a stockbroker. Cause that's so far, does that make sense? They're not driven by money, they're, they're driven by some, so you need to help them understand, it's not what you want to be, it's the type of person that you want to be. And there's great fields of occupations. That's the career planning that we see here. Family engagement. Kanson said, we're not doing that very well. We invite them to a parent-teacher conference to tell them that their kids aren't doing well in school. And they won't come. We're not gonna come for you to beat up on our kids. So the only people, Kanson said, the only parents you're seeing are the ones that do well. And if I didn't do well, right, Melanie, if I quit school, you know, you graduated early, but if I quit school at 16, I'm sure, certainly not coming. God, a bad experience in your school anyway. You better engage, not communicate. See the word engagement differently? That was, more community collaboration, same thing. We're disconnected. The one-room schoolhouse was entirely built around parents and that little section of land, and that, that was the community. And as we, my, my great-grandmother, you know, and my grandmother, I remember this conversation, when they closed Robbins Elementary School, the one-room schoolhouse where my great-grandmother went. She said, Randy, I remember the day they brought the kids to town. I was bringing them to a bigger school, right? Efficiency, better opportunities, but we're, we've lost over those years, some of that tightness with the community. Kanson said, bring it back. They said, the system puts kids into the system and then expects to treat them like a widget. You need to individualize the experience, personalize the experience, start as early as kindergarten, and build the system around the kid, not the sys, not the kid around the system. Biggest challenge that, that we have, because that's entirely asking us to change. They said, we want real-world instruction. We've talked about that. We want them out, and the community, want the community come in. We want project-based learning. Some suggest projects as part of a community service, a qualif, a qualification for graduation, or a better way to teach or measure personality skills, those are those other skills. We want some early childhood in the communities. They did not say for school districts to run early childhood. They were clear. They just said, too many kids arrive at kindergarten without the skillset. Engage your community on how we could do that better. And in fact, many in, in there said, parent, we'd love for that to be at, at home with the parents, but your community needs to decide that. And then a whole host of things that were very, you know, just, hey, we need money, college collaboration, extracurricular, but I'll just quickly go back. Look at that, early childhood, project-based learning, real world, personalize the experience, engage the community, engage the parents, plan for your future and school climate. Man, it's almost like we gave the research from Kansas to ACT. That's, that's, that's the largest qualitative study that was ever done. So here's the take-home lessons. What's the role of K-12 in achieving the future that was described? Redesign the curriculum around individual goals, planning instruction around incorporating real-life problems, not, did the train leave New York at 3:00? And the train left San Francisco, you remember that one? And when do they meet? You know? By the way, go to Andover and watch them teach algebra and geometry while they build a, build a house. They plan for the pitch of the roof. They go, get the equation, they measure it, they go build it. They have a, they have a geometry teacher and a carpentry teacher's teaching side by side. That's what they said they, we ought to be doing. Look, experiential learning is heavily suggested. You see, you can tell this was written by researchers. New roles for school counselors. They said, quit having them run master schedules and have them working with kids. Career planning. Work experience with business and communities. Help them out. And this was before, really, we saw the escalation of suicide, right? But they wanted them working with kids. And then that instrumental skill training that included experiential training, internships, job shadowing, suggest much more integrated coordination with business and community. Go out and talk to any business leader and they keep telling you what the skillsets that are lacking. That's the take-home lessons. How should we measure this? What did Kanson say? Those social emotional measures, non-conceptive, the researchers call those conscientiousness, but it's those interpersonal, interpersonals and school climate are important, but how they can be measured was not clear from what Kanson said. They said, I don't know how we're gonna measure that. Project and task performance are more important measures than traditional assessments. Let that sink in. You didn't make that up. That came from the largest qualitative study on education that's been done, at least to date, maybe still. And post-high school measures, credentials, employment, well-being are important measures of K-12's success. You then developed a vision based on that, those two questions. You took the skillsets and said, they're all in combination. What need to happen? And you develop some goals. Now, before we get to, then what did we ask schools to do in the redesign? And before we get to how are we trying to recognize them? This is another opportunity for you to talk that you'll think is way too short. But we want to give you some opportunity to think about question two, which is how should schools deliver what they've said that they want? Because I will tell you, we're set up to deliver a different outcome. We are set up, and I'm not talking, I'm talking about every school in the country is set up to deliver an academic-only outcome with a little bit of electives off to the side. We know that. That's, we know that. That's what it's set up to, and we do it pretty well, universally. And everyone, there's, there's not a, Kanson's, and there's not a one ounce of research that say today in 2021 or 2015, either one, that that will not get us to the accomplished goal, if we just continue to run this train faster or harder. And it's the hardest work any of us have ever done, because we all went to this school. And many of us here were successful in that school. Right? And so there's a lot of buy-in from parents. Hey, I mean, go take the AP courses, go score well, and, you know, we gotta get on the, you know, we gotta get the good scholarship, go to the good school. I felt that as a parent, you know, with my kids, we all do. And yet, every piece of research and every voice is telling us to do it different. It's tough. So, gonna give you as long as you want. I was, we were gonna say 10 minutes, Betty, but I know already, I'm in trouble. All right? Would like to give you till 11:00 to talk about this second question. How should schools do this? And do you agree or disagree? Or were Kanson's pretty smart? So, there you go. Yes, Gene?
I just had a question. Can you go back to that slide where you had school climate and then you have a whole list of things? I, I see those as kind of like separate things, but if you turn it, it, are any of them like on that mental hierarchy of needs where you have to have this before you can get this?
I think they probably are. I don't know that we cross, the researchers cross-referenced that. I'm gonna kind of take you back to how we did it. So, these were all open-ended questions and we got open-ended responses, Gene. And so what the researchers were trying to do were categorize them in a way. But I think if you look at that, yes, I think there's some sense to that.
But one of those, you had like school climate, I mean, is that gonna be the basis for being able to add?
Oh, it's a good question. I, I, you know, I don't know, maybe. It, it just was one of the top responses, that school climate was not right to get the desired outcome. That's what they were saying. And that, and again, it was, it was, as you can see, it's a lot of different advice on that, but one was, why are we treating kids not wanting to go to four years of college, but wanting to get a credential or an associate degree so much different in terms of the value? That was pretty clear. Okay, I will be quiet. I'll let you guys have discussion. Okay, I will be quiet. I'll let you guys have discussion.
I gave you 20 minutes instead of 10. How do you do that? Exposure. I, I got lucky when I went to college and a lot of people exposed me to things I didn't know and, and I continued to grow. So well taken. What else?
Well, the same thing. You, you just said it. You, you need exposure. You need to, to, it's on. You need to broad, we need to make sure that, that they know that there are other options. And you only do that by broadening those horizons.
Talking to a family that I know well. They have two daughters and a son. And their son somewhat struggled in school academically, not horribly, but compared to the daughters. And he's in alignment today, making a lot more than the two daughters and loving life. Right? Just loving what he's doing. So it's, it's very important. I know Betty left us, but hopefully she'll come back. But, but Ben or Ann, do you want to report out for your?
Hang on.
I know, I gave her too much time.
We agreed with the IPS. Janet, I think, was overhearing us. Cheaters! In terms of that, but with that, we believe redesign as a whole is a good way forward. How do we move it forward and how do we change attitudes? Because there's still an attitude of that's too much work, or we can't do that. And I go back to stories where I hear, where you talk to a kid, what are you interested in? And they tell you what they're interested in. Well, what are your classes that you take? Well, I'm taking this. Well, it's like, go fix it. And the council's like, I can't do that. Yeah, you can. In terms of that, so there's a lot of.
Now, like today, we can. It's all adults, right? We, we're making up the system, so we can change it.
Yeah, and so there's a lot of that attitude. And how do we change that? The other piece of that is how do we make redesign more permanent and growing with, with utilizing mentorships? I know we talked about mentorships being important to teaching overall. Coming through the music world, we, yeah, you have that district mentor. You also through KMEA, not to plug, but I'm just familiar with it. They also partner you with another music teacher in another district. So you have two people to talk to when you have issues. You have somebody internal and somebody external that's in your craft. And do we do that with redesign schools? Get those redesign schools that are really good, partner an English teacher in a school starting redesign and partner with an English teacher that's already been through redesign or is constantly, you're not done with redesign ever, but is in redesign or has already in that process. Do we start to create those relationships? That they have multiple people to go to to make it more successful, say, hey, this is what it's looking like and, and exposing them to, to, to that window.
Excellent. All right. Last but certainly not least, Mr. McNeese?
Oh, good.
Oh, it's the least.
There we go.
Did they, did they steal from what you guys were talking about?
Well, actually, we did talk about IPS. But on a, on a different stroke. You know, we're different from the 90s where we, we focused on the test so much and the delta points, you know, of those tests. It wasn't just the test, it was teaching specific things in language arts and mathematics. You know, we, we've gone behind, beyond that, but not too much. Because, you know, there are others in this, in our society, you know. Parents, legislators who still want that one test. They want that credit in, that 100-question civics test. You know, or, and because you, you take the civics test and you get a 98 doesn't mean you're a good citizen. Just means you know a bunch of stuff that's pretty much unrelated. But at the same time. Are we going to be supportive through KISA or through other avenues of someone who really is going to be innovative? You know, we watched the video and we saw that LA and mathematics drive basically what we do. We have, I think, 22 credits that we require. You know, and most districts have only the option of maybe 28 credits. So we basically tell them what they're going to do. So what if somebody really did want to do something different and they came with a KISA plan that was not familiar? How would we respond? You know, and how would others who are stakeholders and are legitimate stakeholders respond? You know, it's easy to say we need to get rid of it, but hey, I don't know if what you brought is going to satisfy any of the different cognitive and, you know. Test things that we want to do, you know. And we, we have as a board, we agreed, you know, we've opened this redesign and it's gone well in some places and others are, you know, I'm not doing that stuff. You know, I only got three years left of mine or I just got here, you know. Another thing we did talk about was just briefly preparation programs for people coming out. Are they prepared for this? Because we teach our teachers and our administrators to perpetuate the program that's already there. And the people who are teaching in, in the universities, whether they're at Kansas or others, you know, they, they're getting more innovative. But at the same time, they're still vested in perpetuating the, the current status quo.
Excellent, excellent thoughts. And a great lead in to a very short segment that Brad's going to give you and then I have a, so then we're going to discuss again. But he's going to talk about KISA and redesign. So Brad?
Wouldn't it be great to have somebody throw something at us that was just off the line?
Yes.
Yes.
We've been waiting for that.
Yeah.
And you've given them the autonomy to ask you and no one has. No one, no one's pushed you outside, outside that box. I mean, we've expanded the box, I think, but no one's really pushed you on it. And, but maybe we're on the verge. So Brad?
So with all that, in 2016, the board came up with this. So this is the Kansas Can Vision. This is KISA. This is the purpose, the successful high school graduate. So every school, whether they're redesign or whether they're just working, you know, through their accreditation process, this is the goal in front of them. The board took seriously, we need a, a balanced look at a successful high school graduate. While, yes, they do need to be academically prepared and we have a goal for that. They need the cognitive skills, they need the technical skills, the employability skills, which is all of those inter, intra, socio-emotional. And then they need to know how to be civically engaged. And then the board outcomes, again, this is KISA. We focus on socio-emotional growth, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study. And what's exciting, Randy will talk to you here in just a, a little bit. We have districts in all of these qualitative areas that will be recognized in star recognition. And Randy's going to walk. So as we move forward, we will, there are some really good models. But this board expanded the view and said, this is a value. But this board expanded the view and said, this is a value. And some districts are doing amazing things in these and we finally get to start recognizing them and we just continue to build. Within redesign. They're looking at it a little differently. You know, in KISA, we have the four Rs. In redesign, they have the four redesigned principles. But each one of these four redesigned principles align to what research and what Kansans have said were valued. All four of these come right out of the tour. Kanson said, we've gotta focus on these success skills. The socio-emotional. We've got to be able to personalize it for each student. We've got to communicate totally differently with not only families, but communities and business, those partnerships. And we have to have real-world application. These came right out of the tour. But what was unique was when we started the first year with Mercury and Gemini. We didn't have these four redesigned principles at the start of working with them. After a year of working with those districts, these were the four things that were in common in all of our Mercury and Geminis. And it was amazing how much it aligned to what Kanson said we wanted to value. So moving forward. These are the districts and the phases from Mercury to Apollo II. At the same year we rolled out the new KISA model. We started redesign because we wanted some districts to say, we're going to take. The board's vision. And how you've kind of widened it from not only academic, but cognitive, technical, employability, civic. And we're going to really look at our system differently in order to achieve the board outcomes. Next year, we will have Apollo III. That will most likely be our last year. Of taking volunteers of school districts to go through the redesign process. And what we will do, and we've already started it, our KISA team, our redesign team, our technical assistance providers. We'll be taking the best of everything that we've learned in KISA and redesign. And in the 2223 school year, we will quit calling it redesign. And we will bring to this board a new design, an updated adjustments to KISA. And we will then go regionally across the state with all school districts. Because the goal of this board was by the year 2026, remember, it was a 10-year goal. All school districts would be involved in a whole new process. So we are putting plans into place to pilot with some districts next year. The best that we've learned in redesign. Fold it in to a new KISA process. Because in 2223, we're gonna have over a hundred school districts. Come through the arc to this board and ready to new, start a new process. And we will be ready for a statewide, regional, school improvement process. That aligns to everything that we've been learning from all of these school districts here. And, and Jim was right, some have been more successful than others. Some, I mean, because every one of those districts and those schools in those districts will tell you, it's not easy. The difference between them is that, one, they had a willingness. And two, we were able to be in person with them and lead them through the challenges of it. We've got to replicate that for all the rest of the school districts in the state. Because at some point, we will quit taking volunteers and that'll be in the 2223 school year. And it will be the expectation under KISA. But we will revise because one thing we always said with KISA, when we rolled it out the first year. It's not 100% perfect. It's better than what we were doing under QPA. But we will update it and we'll revise it and we will do that by learning from all of these districts here. That went out early and said, we're going to, to really push ourselves. So the goal is in 2223, we will still support these. But we will also roll out in partnership with our service centers and our Tasen folks and build the capacity. We will have regional school improvement in person. Because most of our district, and I was the same way, as a superintendent, I thought I knew. But I would have been honest that I would have gone to that, I would have taken my team to that regional because I didn't know enough. None of us have that. Some districts do, but the majority, we know that. Even all these here will tell you it was the hardest work they've done, but it's been the most valuable. So we've gotta replicate that for everybody else. So with that.
You wanna, you wanna just talk a little bit about the pandemic and Apollo III?
Yeah.
Interest.
So one thing we will be doing in Jay and Tammy, and, and yes, I was nodding to you about mentors. Jay and Tammy have folded in to the, to the redesign. All of these schools and districts have rock stars. And we've then put in a mentoring model that they are mentoring others, especially the Apollo II's and the ones coming on. But Apollo, the one thing we can stress is the, the state's board's vision, our purpose has never changed. The pandemic may have changed some of our paths, but we have not changed our purpose. Jay and Tammy are reinventing and restructuring the Apollo III to help them. Come out of this pandemic and use navigating next, new, use their resources. Cause all of these districts didn't get a penny more than anyone else to redesign. They just had to have a willingness. So Apollo III will be a huge focus, not only on redesign, but how to take the things in navigating next. Which are great strategies to push ourselves forward because our goal coming out of this pandemic. Is not to recreate what we had before the pandemic. Because one thing the pandemic has done is exposed flaws and holes in our old system. And there are strategies. To address that, and that's what Apollo III will be focused on. But we will be ready for the 2223 school year to roll all of that in to a new regional school improvement model. For districts coming out of year five and into a new cycle.
And you think we'll have any schools interested, Brad?
I. I, we will have some that we will probably say you don't have a choice. But I think we will have many that will say, I'm ready. Because not only will they be needing it, but it will be the expectation under KISA. So, so in your groups, just a little bit of time here. I'll let Betty know, let me know when time's up. But we'll, we just wanna give you a few minutes to just think about what we just talked about, our plans moving forward. And your thoughts on that.
Give you about two more minutes, please.
So let's start with this group over here first this time. Thoughts on your discussions?
We think it's a great idea.
Great. Let's then, no.
That's what we just talked about. We thought it was a great idea. And we know that there are some districts that have not become involved because in the redesign projects, because they feel like they've already been doing those kinds of things. So it will be interesting to see if they measure up.
Well, and again, you know, we as an agency or as a state weren't designed to support 286 school districts. And then with private, we just, we were designed to work with volunteers. So we've got to change how we operate as an agency. And we, and we can't do it at our own. That's why we have to partner with all of our services, everybody, USA. You know, the contract with USA and Kelly and KASB with using it on leadership. We don't have a leadership department. But we shouldn't be trying to do everything. We need to partner with every, so. How about this group over here?
Well, I, we think we can, you know, by rewarding and, you know, acknowledging the districts that are doing right, we can encourage some others to go along and some you're going to have to get that stick out and do it. Our biggest concern is the urban poor districts, the three big ones. Because that model that works there and works in Tesco is not going to happen. I mean, we had the legislature hired an expert to come in a couple of years ago and say, how much money do we need to reach the Rose standards? And that expert, I know they thought she was going to lowball it, but she came back and said, if you're going to do that, you need two billion with a B more dollars added to public education. And they didn't do it. They added 500 million. So we're never going to have the money to get down to the class size in Kansas City or Topeka or Wichita that you can do out in Twin Trees, you know? And so we really have to figure out what redesign is going to look like in those big urban poor districts because that's a whole different model than, than we've been training people to do in, in the, what I call regular redesign. That's a big concern for us.
And I had a little bit of conversation over here and right, right before the pandemic, we brought in, we'd call it maybe the big, the big 12. And I don't remember exactly how many to talk about that exact same thing because those districts, number one, need a different model. They need a different support model. You know, they're not just going to send teams to Green Bush North, you know, we're going to have to go there. But we also have federal school improvement dollars targeted for them. It's what we do with them is going to have to look different.
I don't think we figured that out yet, so.
Well, after I'm done, you guys can do whatever you want. How about the middle group?
You'll find this difficult to believe, but we got way off track.
We were totally on track.
But, but, but basically, I think support, the issue, but recognize that each district is different. Elk Valley and Blue Valley are two different places, completely different. And we have to recognize that each school district has different, different issues. But they all need to make sure that our kids have those skills necessary to be successful.
Definitely. And one thing Jay and Tammy will share with you when you look at this map right now, even though every one of them went through a similar process, what they discovered through that process and what they implemented and their strategies are all unique to their culture, to their community, to what their needs are. It's the process that we helped them go through to discover that and how to empathize, ID, all of those. So it's great to hear. I am going to turn it over to our closer, Dr. Watson.
So Jim and I were having a conversation as this group took a break. And then, and then came back quickly and came together. This week, for those of you that don't know, state basketball week. And we're now set up for the semifinals, final four in state basketball. And I would bet you could call the principal and superintendent of every high school and every school district and they could tell you who those final four are, whether they were in there or not. I bet they could tell you. And when they lost, if they did lose, because there's only down to four. There's a scoreboard that's very clear whether it's KMEA, right? Who gets a one at contest? Or it's basketball or cross country, right? And who ranks? There's a scoreboard. And there's not anyone that disputes it other than maybe the dispute we have going on between private and public right now, right? Because of recruiting. But no one disputes if Lewisburg goes and plays Fort Scott. I'm trying to think of similar classifications. And someone wins, someone loses. They don't dispute that that competition, right, is going to happen. Well, we need to start recognizing at the highest levels, and this will happen in April, those people that are doing a really good job. As Brad said, as we get into the next round of KISA, if you're doing a really good job, we can help you, but we may just say, get out of your way, right? Because you're really doing a really good job. I mean, if we're going to differentiate PD and microcredentially, we ought to differentiate accreditation. So with that.
Okay, engine stop. System, uh, tranquility there, Jim. The UCA has landed.
Roger, twang. Tranquility, we copy you on the ground. You got a bunch of guys about to turn blue.
Apollo 11. And by the way, that's as high a technology as I can get, a little voiceover with a little animation. So Melanie, I'm not very good after that, but I get that. Here's the recognition program. We call it star recognition. You have a handout because people are going to ask, why did we derive how we derived? And why are we recognizing what we recognize? And so I want to just walk you through that. I want you to, yep. And we have others. If you want to take things with you and, you know, give these out. But in April, I'm going to tell you who has won these, this recognition. Now, I don't know if you've known anyone that ever was an Olympian. Annette Woodard was an Olympian, a pretty good basketball player, but on a team sport, right? Steve Fritz was an Olympian, decathlete out of Kansas State. Who do you know, Ben? Jim, oh, Jim Ryan. Oh, yeah, yeah, like one of the top Olympians came out of Kansas. Yeah, Paralympics. Jim, do you know someone? Yes, yeah. Who do you know, Jim?
And Dick, played on the 1968 basketball team.
Okay. So you have to be a really elite athlete to get to the Olympics. Would we agree? I mean, you go through trials. And yet, when you get to the Olympics, they only give you three medals. Everyone else is a loser, even though you're the best of the best, right? Oh, you're the best France had. Ah, you get eight. No good, right? So I will tell you when we recognize next month, and we have four levels, I'll talk about diamond in a sec. It's like standing on the Olympic medal. And guess what? We don't give participation ribbons. The people that we're going to be recognizing next month have achieved at the level that we have to see to get to that success that we're talking about. So even if they're at copper, that's not low level. And if they're at gold, it's remarkable. And over time, what I know is this, I'm going to come back to music. All right? If you want a good music program, there are great examples across Kansas. Excellent examples of instrumental music that's just great. And if you're not very good, I bet some people want to be pretty good, right? It's, it's pretty clear. How do you, you know? So when we look at this, here's what a gold level is going to look like next, next month. First of all, you're going to notice two broad categories that we have. And you see this on what, what's in front of you that you're reading. We have quantitative. That's like the hard numbers. You just, you just calculate a number. It's no ifs, ands, or buts. It's not fair sometimes. We'll talk about that because there's different risk factors. And then there's qualitative, meaning individual plans of study you all were talking about. Hey, some people do it really well and some people. Well, that's, there's not a hard measure, right? Just like we, just like Kenzen said, some of these things are hard to measure. Those are qualitative. So what we've done is we've had a group of people working for over a year on what does it mean to really have a good IPS? What does it mean to have really good kindergarten readiness in your community? What does it mean to have good social, emotional, and then measured against that rubric? And over time, I will tell you, school districts are competitive. And if you show the scoreboard, by the way, no one's going to want to show the scoreboard. It's okay to show it in football because everyone expects it. Or who got a one at choir? Or who got the jester awards in drama, right? That's okay because we're used to it. I mean, we played on Saturday, but people are going to be reluctant to want to show this data academically, socially, emotionally, because we've never done it. We've got to start doing that. We've got to start showing the scoreboard, not to embarrass anyone, so that everyone understands what are the measures that need to take place. So I'm going to ask you a couple of questions here. Graduation rate 95%. Why was 95% or greater chosen to be at the gold level? Can anyone answer that? It's the best in the world. First of all, if you don't graduate high school, your odds of going on to live in the middle class drastically diminish in our state. It's not impossible. There are example, but you're the, you're the exception. You're not the rule. So graduating high school is paramount. No state, no country has a 95% graduation rate. And this year, we hit 89.5. And two days ago, now, it was a day, two days ago, a phone call came into our offices from a graduate student at the University of Delaware, working on a PhD, who had called the United States Department of Education. And her PhD is on English language learners. She was interested in people that are doing that right. And they said, there are only four states that have over an 80% graduation rate of English language learners. And you might want to call Kansas because they're the best, from the US Department of Ed. Where have you read about that recently? Nowhere, right? It's one, it's one of the measures school districts have to attend to. It's not the only, and it can, but it's one. We're going to honor some school districts next month that are above 95%. Post-secondary effective, 70%. That is the number of kids that start as freshmen two years after high school graduation, graduated high school and earned something else or are still in school pursuing. That's all that means. 70%, all right? Why 70%? We just didn't make these numbers up. Yep. The information that we received from Georgetown is that the job market, they analyzed the job market in Kansas and said that 71% of the jobs require two pieces of paper, a high school diploma and something else. And if you want to know the breakdown, because we've shared it with you, half of that 71% are baccalaureate, masters and PhDs in our state, and half are associate degree and certificate. That's why the kid that wants to be an electrician is just as valuable as a kid that wants to be a pharmacist, because the job market is 50/50 in our state, at least currently. So that's why we said, we, and was 70%. We're going to recognize some school districts that are hitting 70%. Public and private. We do public and private. How about academic? When you look at prepared for high school graduation, if you flow that over, that, that's that definition. We're looking at state assessments, an ACT score, your work key score. And we're still working on what technical skills may look like, but you heard that maybe we do a value added, meaning how many hours or how many certificates you graduate with maybe. 75% at level three and four. We already told you that we set the standard and the cut score, which, at the level that you need to have at age 16 to execute any post-secondary plan. This is now, we're talking about English language arts, reading, English, and math and science. So states will come under civic engagement. 75% at level three and four. Okay? Because the level three and four, we can guarantee, level two, by the way, you can do pretty well post-secondary. In some cases, you hit the mark in level two, but not all. If you're in the lower part of level two or level one. It is not grade level. Grade level is a 1940s, 50s term that talked about just graduating high school. This is the, the skill level needed for post-secondary at third or fourth grade. How many public and private schools currently would be at the gold level of 75% of their kids, on average, all grades, all subjects are at level three and four? Ben is right, zero. Did we set it too high? I don't think so. I think other states set it too low and give a false indication of the academic needs that we need to go. We've got a long way to go there. We've got a long way to go there. ACT 24 and above with high participation rate, right? That's, that's really high for an average. Not, not if you're looking at your own kid. Oh, I don't know about that, right? But, but for an average. How about work keys? 100% silver, which equates to just under 70% of the jobs in our state. And gold would equate to 94% of all jobs in our state. See the levels that we're saying need to be there? Which one's more important, graduation or the, or the prepared for graduation?
Both.
Both. The others are subjective, meaning you're going to have to have some things in place. So Civic Advocacy Network has some, some things in place. You've heard Marcy and Don talk about that. Social, emotional. Are you doing the right things? I showed you the ACT. I talked about Jeff Almond at McPherson Middle School, and he's been doing this a long time. They, they, they look at every student on that social, emotional scale. They, they measure that. And they give lessons to every kid, right? This is how you get better perseverance. This is, and then they measure. And kids that are low, they bring them in small groups and they work, you know? They work with them on how to get that better. And kids that are really off the chart bad and getting in trouble, they bring therapists in and they work with kids. Did we set it too high? I don't think so. I think other states set it too low and give a false indication of the academic needs that we need to go. We've got a long way to go there. We have a long way to go there. ACT twenty-four and above with high participation rate, right? That's, that's really high for an average. Not, not if you're looking at your own kid, oh, I don't know about that, right? But, but for an average. How about work keys? Hundred percent silver, which equates to just under seventy percent of the jobs in our state. And gold would equate to ninety-four percent of all jobs in our state. See the levels that we're saying need to be there? Which one's more important, graduation or the, or the prepared for graduation? Both? Both. The others are subjective, meaning you're going to have to have some things in place. So Civic Advocacy Network has some, some things in place. You've heard Marcy and Dawn talk about that. Social, emotional, are you doing the right things? I showed you the ACT, I talked about Jeff Alman at McPherson Middle School, and he's been doing this a long time. They, they, they look at every student on that social, emotional scale, they, they measure that. And they give lessons to every kid, right? This is how you get better perseverance, this is... And then they measure, and kids that are low, they bring them in small groups and they work, you know? They work with them on how to get that better. And kids that are really off the chart bad and getting in trouble, they bring therapists in, and they work with kids. And they've had remarkable success over the three years in middle school of helping kids get better. That's an example of really doing good work, right? So a sample school district, when, next month when I show you, may look like this. Couple of golds, a copper, oh, we're not recognized in a couple of areas, or maybe multiple areas. And I'm going to share with you, and it's inaugural, right? Because this is the first time we're doing all of them. A school district that hits five out of the seven areas on the medal stand. And you should do backflips next week or next month about that school district. They're not all at gold, but they're on the medal stand in five out of the seven areas. And soon, soon, I don't know what year it'll be, we'll have some people that are on the medal stand in all seven. Why? Because we're going to have a scoreboard. And we're going to talk about it, and we're going to try to help people get there. Because unlike when Lewisburg plays Fort Scott, if they happen to, someone wins and someone loses on that Friday night. We have a high standard that everyone can get to. And just because that, uh, Madison Lodge gets there doesn't mean that Conway Springs loses. Does that make sense? But some people, you know, won't. And, and the last thing that isn't on here is the Commissioner's Award for those that are outperforming their risk factors on that post-secondary and graduation by more than two standard deviations. There's four school districts that will be recognized, and we've already recognized two of them. So I'll announce that. Fairfield, Kansas, proud district of Ben Jones. And Front Neck, which we recognized Monday night, Jim and I did at their board meeting. Two still to go, so we'll announce those as we go see them. One's in Gene's district, though, one's in Jim and Betty's district. Four, outperforming by two standard deviations their predictive value. So this isn't going to be done to beat up people. It's to shine a light on those that are really doing well. And then that's how we can adjust our KISA expectations in the future, right? Small, medium, and large, all doing well. Small, medium, large, all need assistance. It's a combination of all those things. So instead of a small group, because at some point, you all are going to walk out and go to lunch. I know how this works. I'd be interested in just your general comments about STAR recognition is the recognition system of the board outcomes and the work that school districts have been doing. And it's, again, it's like, you know, Cindy Marion or Greg McGlynn, you know both of those well, Ben, dragging me down to Wichita to watch a play that I'd seen five or six times performed at the Jester Awards, and they were being adjudicated. And then getting to go, right, is on a national, or debate team that wins the state, and like Auburn Washburn, goes and wins the national tournament. What an honor, right, to go do that? Very clear outcome. So at some point, that Diamond Award, I didn't mention that. That's going to be for the people that sit on the stand at the gold level. Someday, we're going to have someone get there, and then maybe more than someone. And it won't happen overnight, but it can happen if we build it right. And we support those people that are really working hard and doing the right work. Some districts will be more disadvantaged than others. I grew up in one of those. Betty, you represent, you know, a large one of those. It's, it's going to be more difficult, but it can be done. And we've got people proving it. So your thoughts or comments before you all decide to go somewhere downtown for lunch?
Well, I'll start. You broached this subject of awards and recognition like this, oh, several years ago, informally. And I wasn't too impressed. And trust me, I was, as a principal, an award gatherer. And I, I don't know, I was, I questioned it. But I have to tell you, I like this. You've, you've hit some points where you give people hope and, and challenge at the same time. So I like this. I mean, this is, this, this is, can be used against us, you know, by those who don't like us, you know, it's just like a, and, and you can still be a good school without reaching all those, you know, but at the same time, I, I like the idea of recognizing, enhancing, motivating, challenging our districts to, to move forward. So I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Other thoughts?
You very rarely get less, when you set high standards. I, I support the fact that we've set them high, because, because that, that, that is real challenging. What I like about this, first of all, one of the things I like about this is that we're recognizing the things that we've, other than just the academics, which are important, we're recognizing the other things also that people across the state have told us were important. So we're keeping the focus on, on those non-academic skills, social, social, emotional, civic engagement, those sorts of things, too. And so I think that's, that's a real good opportunity for us to keep emphasis on those, those necessary skills.
And it's not arbitrary. It's the skill sets and combination that none of us have perfect that lead to successful adulthood, right? It's not all, but it's some. Betty?
I kind of am on the fence, fifty-fifty. And I, and I will tell you why. I do think that it is great to recognize those that have done an outstanding job. On the flip side of that, however, that's, that's kind of where the, the concern is. You used a word that I like, which was support. It's great to showcase those that have excelled. But what are the things that we have in place to help those that have not? And, and, and sometimes those that haven't reached that, it can flip on you. It's, it's kind of like, if I can use the example of a student that's able to read, and here's one that has the obstacle of dyslexic, and you say, okay, we're going to award you because you have come home with perfect scores. This student, we, we didn't know what the problem was, other than you didn't reach those goals. When you bring in the element of support, then it, it really kind of makes the, even out the playing field a little more. I do like that idea on the flip side to look at those districts, look at, identify, help identify what the problems are, because in a district such as two-five-nine, those problems are great. And, you know, it's, it's kind of like, we can do it here because the number is small. And here, it seems insurmountable. I, I was using the example in our small group, is you have this mountain, you give both teachers a spoon. One may look up and say, man, I can't do this. The other may keep their head down and little by little, step by step, gain ground. I like that idea, because to encourage those that didn't make it and to offer the support and to have the belief that here's a set of goals that don't fit for you, that's, that's just the only part that I've not, I've not worked out. Can we actually do this in this large urban environment? And if we can, have we allocated, kind of like what Ann was saying, those resources to make it happen? And if that's kind of where we are, understanding that it may be easy for some, I have one kid that, mom, I think I flunked my test. Then she comes home, I got an A. What is this? How do you think you flunked and you got an A? You know, those that, it just comes easy. Those, there, there's some that really have to struggle. And I, I guess it's those that have to struggle that I really want to see maybe some kind of focus, some kind of encouragement, some kind of, you're not just being thrown out. So with that in mind, overall, I guess it's a good place to be.
Appreciate that. One story and then three examples, Betty, I think that'll illustrate. So as I do every night, I talked to my wife last night after we had dinner. And she said, you know, we got a new kid at our school, and he's, he's, so this is in elementary, I'm not going to tell you the grade, you know, he's homeless, he's kicked out of his house because he's disruptive, and single mom said, I don't want you anymore. And she said, you know, and we came in and we had support built around. She said, I got, she said, she had these remarkable teachers, you know, that every one of them just cares so deeply. She goes, I've never been around a staff, she tells me this all the time. Of all my years, it just care. She goes, but you know, that kid is terrific. He's terrific. Oh, I just wish we would have had him earlier. You know, we're only going to have him a few, I wish we would have had him earlier. Because he's terrific, he's got so much going on, but we've got to unpeel that onion, you know, of, of the issues. He said, and, and yet, he's not out of the, he's homeless. He's, he's homeless, he's going to be, end up in foster care. But it's that support, right? It's, it's a system. When I think about Wichita, what I'm really impressed with what the board just did, and I'm sure you were a part, and Alicia, they have a strategic plan that aligns directly to this vision. Huge undertaking. They're talking about competency-based and trying to move kids different. And then it's an allocation of resources, right? And what I'm so excited, you're talking about Dr. Lori Taylor's study. The state of Kansas is committed to maintaining the GAN and funding, so half a million. We're going to get a billion dollars of federal money over the next three years, together. That's for one, two, and three. Privates are going to get an equivalent amount relative. We have an opportunity, Betty and Ann, to accelerate what we need to see. It won't be quite what she said, but we, we've never had that. But we got to do it right. And so there will be, it's like anything, if this, if this gets mis-messaged, it can do harm. Right, you've got to measure growth, that's the other thing, Betty. You've got to encourage and measure growth. And that's why when I'm in Fairfield with Ben, we're talking about their, where they were, and how they outperformed themselves so big that it still wasn't enough to get them on the gold stand, but it was a step toward that. And we recognize them for that. So this will be misinterpreted and misused. I have no doubt about that. But as I tell people all the time, and I, and I, I've always sensed this of this board and previous boards, at the end of the day, it's not about a win or lose, or, you know, or political point. It's about someone's life and a family's trajectory. And so we have to do the right thing, even if that right thing ends up being misplayed, you know, somewhere inadvertently or on purpose. It's not about that, right? It's about looking at every kid and, and every family and saying, how can we just help tilt the, the odds that we're going to help that, that kid and that family be successful? Never, never knowing for sure, but tilt the odds. And as I, as I said yesterday, it's 2021, and we've been trying to do this work for Jim since, when did you start your career? Dina, when did you start your career? Jim, when did you start your career? When did you first join the Turner Board, Janet? A lot, a lot, a lot of time, right? We've been all trying to do this work, and now we have an infusion of money, stable set of circumstances of state money, a willingness by a lot of school districts to really go tackle this. And we're not going to get it all right, Betty. And someone's gonna, right? But we're going to really double down on that effort. And hopefully highlight those people that are doing it. Not, not as an egotistical thing, as an, as, as a way to shine a light on it can be done. And we want to, we want to just continue to plug away. You know, yesterday with the data, I said it was a heavy lift on the data, and today's been a heavy lift, just in thinking, you're going to leave here with more questions than answers? I think that's always, that's always instructive. Next, next month, going to share with you a multitude of school districts, some of which you're going to go, really? That's okay. Some you're going to, why what? Because we all have in our mind who the good school districts are in Kansas. Right? And, you know, and some of those, and this will be private and public, our accredited school systems, and the start of honoring them. A year ago, we wanted to have, we had this big celebration planned in Manhattan. Stinking pandemic, big celebration. Ed O'Malley was going to come emcee it, we were inviting everyone in, you know, to celebrate those that were hitting all the quantitative outcomes at that time. And we still hope to do that. It's going to be in the fall now for the next round. But we just ought to celebrate anytime we can, those people doing well. So that, Mr. Chairman, I've exceeded, as Dale would say, exceeded my knowledge at about nine oh one, and certainly exceeded my time just recently.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the opportunity to work together. Thanks to the board for your patience, and we are adjourned.